Planning Commission Citizen Advisory Committee, City of Lowell, where our regular meeting is Monday, October 8th, 2018. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under our own, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, roll call, please.
Commissioner Brylmeyer, here. Commissioner Ken Waldner?
Here.
Commissioner Ellis?
Here.
Commissioner Strabin?
Here.
Commissioner Chambers, and Plank and Abson, and Chair Barker.
Here. And do I have a motion to excuse Plank and Chambers?
Motion.
And support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excused, thank you. Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve it.
And support?
Support.
Any discussion? The agenda stands approved. And do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting?
Okay, I got a motion for that, yeah.
And support?
Support, yeah, support.
And we have two minor amendments here, under present, were missing Kelly, and we have Marty Chambers twice. What was that?
We'll make that correction.
Thank you. And we'll consider that.
Second is that motion?
Tony, yes.
Okay.
We'll consider those minor corrections, so we don't have to amend it and all of that. All in favor of accepting the minutes as proposed, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign, minutes are accepted then. Is there any public comment? Anybody want to... Any public comment? No?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. There is no old business, and our new business is the Planned Unit Development Proposed Amendments. And you will find those on... Well, first of all, we have the Williams &amp; Works, and he's got the proposed amendments, and they're highlighted in information. That is on like the fourth page in the packet. And you want to start there, Andy?
Yeah, I think that's probably the easiest.
Sure, yeah, thanks. So, I've provided to you three documents. One of them is just the memo from us, that's basically a cover memo that summarizes what we changed, because we changed a lot, as you can see. Then we also provided to you both a clean copy and a marked-up copy of the amendment, so you can see, I don't know which one is easier for you to read through, but so much has changed, I figured that we should probably add both. Because the clean one is obviously a little bit easier to read, but the other one should help you figure out kind of what's changing and what's not. So I'll just kind of go through this section by section. And if there are questions with regard to why I'm changing something, or why I'm proposing that we change something, just jump in and let me know, and we can talk about it.
And I guess I would suggest maybe looking at the old copy, it might be easier for us at all.
That's the one that I'm using, is I want to do this. So under the first section, fifteen point oh one, we've added a little bit of language under description that just sort of explains, and I think a little bit better detail, and more appropriate detail, what the purpose of the PUD district is. This next paragraph about the purpose is pretty much the same, as you can see. And then there's another paragraph underneath there that has been completely deleted, not because it's bad language, I just don't... I think it's already covered elsewhere. It basically talks about the process, or the proceedings being conducted with due consideration for all of these things. And all of these things are considered, and I don't think we need to repeat it, and it's just a huge list of stuff, and it's hard to read. And so for those reasons, I felt like that we should take it out. Under section fifteen point oh two, when we get into objectives and qualifying conditions. So if you remember last month, when we were talking about PUDs, these are kind of a unique tool in zoning. So what we're allowing is for someone to deviate from what would be permitted under your underlying zoning district to something that wouldn't be permitted normally. But if an applicant or a developer gives us a plan that makes sense, that satisfies the city's master plan, for example, and meets some other conditions, there's a process to allow for that kind of creativity. One of the critiques of zoning that you'll hear is that everything's the same, right? Your lot area always has to be this much, and the setback is always this, and the block width is always going to be this, and everything's always the same, and so it's kind of boring, repetitive development pattern. The PUD allows for flexibility from all of this. So whether you're building homes, or whether you're redeveloping a site, or doing something different, this allows a developer and the city the flexibility to think about something different. Think about mixed uses, think about, you know, traditional walkable communities, maybe that wouldn't be permitted in your zoning ordinance, to think about deviations from standards about parking, or building height, or building placement, or the size of parcels, or density, or whatever. You can think about deviations from all of these things, and this gives someone a mechanism to move forward with a project that is beneficial to both the city and the developer with some flexibility in mind. So, having said all that, in order to do that, we have some qualifying conditions. So, in section A, I add some language here that says, "The degree to which the following objectives are satisfied shall be considered by the Planning Commission and City Council in its review of the PUD in order to realize the inherent advantages of ordinary, flexible, comprehensive, long-range planning and development." So, part of that language is new, part of it is old. And then you'll see the next few bullets here kind of talk about what a PUD should be in a city. So the first one talks about the provision and protection of open spaces, cultural and historic resources, and development of recreational land, and so on and so forth. Again, most of that language is already there. On top of page two, we've added a whole bunch of things that are brand-new. And if you recall, at the last meeting, one of the comments that I had about the existing PUD language is that it was sort of geared towards only this single-family residential suburban type of pattern, which doesn't always fit here in the city, because you're not really a suburban place, and you're mostly out of the city, it's on a grid. And so items two, three, four, and five allow for and talk about things that aren't related to that suburban, single-family pattern. So we talked about number two, to encourage a more creative and imaginative approach in the development of property, to allow... Number three, to allow for market-driven development or redevelopment in places that are most conducive to accommodating additional activity. Four, to facilitate economic development through the creation of a mix of uses. Five, to create walkable developments with pedestrian-oriented buildings and open space. And number five that I took out here about underground utilities, we require that anyways, and most everyone installs that, installs that, we knew. So we took that one out. Number six, to provide for the adaptive reuse of significant or historic buildings. I can't even tell how many buildings in the city that are interesting and historic or significant in some way, and should be preserved, and so that should be something that the Planning Commission and Council consider. Seven, eight, and nine are unchanged. Number ten, to minimize adverse traffic impacts and to accommodate safe and efficient pedestrian access and circulation. Again, this is getting back to that walkable kind of theme that we've been touching on here. Number eleven, to provide for redevelopment of sites or buildings that are underdeveloped or have fallen into disrepair. So again, this provides a process, if there's a dilapidated building, underdeveloped parcel, and there's potential to improve the whole thing and build something of a high quality, but it's for some reason, either the uses or the building under conventional zoning would not be able to be improved due to the way the laws are written. This again allows for a process to make those improvements. And then B, so that's kind of the objectives, and B is the qualifying conditions. So the first one about ownership, that one has not changed. It must be either in one ownership, or found jointly by the owners of all affected properties. There was a number two here that required it to be a minimum of five acres in contiguous area. We took that one out, because there are a lot of parcels in the city that aren't built very close to five acres, but you could still develop them to some reasonable density. And then with number two, and a lot of this is also unchanged, it says to be considered, the proposed element must fulfill at least one of the following conditions. So item A contains two or more separate and distinct land uses. For example, this had residential and multifamily. I put residential dwellings in office or commercial uses to emphasize that this might not just be a residential project. Item B and C are unchanged, so B, if not that, then if the site exhibits natural features and twenty-five percent of land area would be preserved as a PUD, that would be a qualifying condition. Or three, if it's designed to preserve in perpetuity at least sixty percent of the total area of the site of open space. So one of the things this allows, and I think we talked about this last month, if you're entitled to a certain number of dwellings out of your current zoning, you could take all of those, instead of having an acre or a half acre for all of them, you can kind of cluster them all together on a much smaller piece of land, and then the remainder of the site is now preserved permanently as open space. And that's really what most of the old ordinance was thinking about when it was written. So we're kind of adding to that significantly. Item D, which I added, again along that same vein of redevelopment, is that the PUD constitutes a significant redevelopment of an underutilized or vacant property where conventional building may not be feasible.
And Andy, that's only... We only need one there?
Yes.
One of those?
Yep.
So we don't need like two, or you know, two of them, it's just one anymore?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Then item three, the applicant must demonstrate that the proposed PUD is consistent with the adopted master plan. You'll see in this document, as we work through it, the master plan comes up a lot. That's one of the most important driving factors with decisions like this. If somebody comes in with a mixed-use PUD, some sort, like they're doing it in an area that's not planned for mixed uses, or something like that, that's going to be a major issue they're going to have to overcome if they want to get it approved. So we're going to refer to the master plan and rely on the master plan quite a bit in this document, and as a PUD, if an application comes in, as it's processed by us in the city, we'll be looking at the master plan quite a bit, making sure that it's consistent with those themes. Section fifteen point oh three, so this, in the old ordinance, it started talking about the application procedures, we're not getting there yet, because there's other stuff to go through, which I think makes a little more sense. So this section now talks about uses permitted by right in a PUD, and residential density. So you see under item A here, I changed all this language to say, "The following uses may be permitted in any PUD," so we can simplify this a little bit. And then items one, two, three, and four, we covered all that. And so we replaced it with, "Uses permitted by right or by special land use in the underlying zoning district." Two, "Any use that is determined by the Planning Commission to be consistent with the city's master plan," so there's a master plan reference again. And three, "A combination of residential, commercial, and public uses which are determined to be compatible with existing adjacent uses." So this is a lot more flexible than what was in there before. So before, I talked about single-family, two-family, multifamily, and then something that you could do in the C1 neighborhood commercial, or neighborhood business district, which is in the ordinance, it's not mapped. There aren't any properties in the city's zone C1. And so instead of limiting it to what is in this one district, which does not exist physically anywhere within the city, again, I felt like we should rely on the underlying zoning, which we've opened through, and then the master plan, and then three, other things that maybe aren't contemplated specifically by the master plan or the underlying zoning district, but the commission still feels would make sense, given the context of the neighborhood. One of the things that we'd like to build into these when we can is some degree of flexibility, because you don't think of every single conceivable thing under the sun that someone would want to do with their property. We think we do, but inevitably, someone comes up with something, and they say, "Now, I want to do this," and they go, huh. Didn't think of that, we better add it in here, like with short-term rentals, for example. This ordinance was drafted, no one really thought about that specific thing and how it's evolved over the years, so now we have to go back and add it in. So this allows for that. So this next item, which is... Should be item A, actually. My words messed up my number here, it's C in the document after number three. It says, "Only those uses approved for the PUD district shall therefore be permitted within the PUD." And so what that means is, once a PUD is approved, whatever land uses they are proposing in that PUD, they're kind of locked into that parcel. So if you're dealing with a PUD that has an office component, and then it gets approved, and then they decide later, "Well, I don't want to use it for offices, I want to use it for something else that's maybe not compatible," they can't do that. They have to do what this locks in, whatever they were approved is the only thing they can do on that site, without coming back for it.
I was going to say, they would have to come back before the Planning Commission or the Council, in essence, to make any changes.
Yeah, it depends on the nature of the change.
For uses.
For uses, yeah. Yeah, so I mean, if it's something that's really, really close, then we might consider making that call of staff, but otherwise, anything significant would have to come back, they would go through that same process over again.
Correct.
The next item for a PUD is located in non-residential or mixed-use district. "The maximum number of dwelling units permitted in a PUD shall be determined by the Planning Commission in consideration of the master plan, existing future land uses, capacity of public facilities and services, and other factors." So what a lot of ordinances do with PUDs is that it ties the density, the residential density, to whatever is in there presently. So if it's, if you have, say, a ten thousand square foot lot, you do the math, say, okay, on this site, I can fit in X number of homes. That's the number of dwellings you're allowed to build, period. However, since this contemplates PUDs that would be in the non-residential district, that math doesn't really make sense. So again, this is a lot more flexible, right? It allows for kind of anything, as long as the... As long as the Planning Commission reuse it in consideration of the master plan existing in future uses and so forth. So it's reliant on the master plan, and the Planning Commission, and City Council to look at a development, to make sure that it's in appropriate context with the neighborhood, and it's in agreement with master plan. So it shifts that burden a little bit towards master plan and towards the city selected and appointed officials. Item B, for PUDs located in one or more residential districts, "The permitted density shall not be greater than that permitted in the underlying zone whose uses are permitted. If it's in more than one district, then they shall be calculated on a proportionate basis." So if you're in R2 and R3, there's a density difference between those two districts, so we'd do the math, you know, proportionally, and that would be the total number of dwellings on that site. Now, they can move it around however they want, arrange it however they want, but the total number of units permitted would be limited to what's in the underlying zone.
Andy, with this effect in any way, commercial businesses? I mean, number of buildings, or anything along that line? Or is there any comparable thing that we should be looking at in addition to simple dwellings? Because we're looking at doing more than just dwellings here.
Right, yeah, this is looking at all kinds of different things. Now, if it's a purely commercial development, and this has a multitude of commercial businesses in it, this might not, I don't know that I recommend this mechanism as the one being used unless they needed it for some other reason. Because we already have the flexibility in the ordinance, where we talked about, you know, some of the strip commercial and things like that. In the C3 district, we already have things in the ordinance that allow for strip malls and multiple uses in those buildings. Could we think about a different way to handle it? Maybe, again, this relies a lot on the master plan.
Right.
So depending on what kind of uses and what kind of density the master plan talks about, that's going to govern how you guys...
I just, I mean, let's just, before we're talking about adding businesses, and all of a sudden, we're just, in this particular case, we're looking strictly at residential.
Yeah. And so, yeah, this is a little...
And I wouldn't have a clue, but it's... Can I add something to this? Community I came from, the majority of the city was planned unit development. It was primarily for the downtown district, downtown redevelopment. It allowed, it allowed a lot of thi... The planned unit development allowed a lot of things to happen that under traditional zoning wouldn't happen. And it's more geared towards... We did planned unit development in our, in our, in our, in our commercial district, where we had a number of big box stores. We did allow for PUD there initially, because there were a number of projects that came in. That's where they actually had their first test at it. But they, the downtown district was overlaid into a planned unit development district. And it gave a lot of flexibility to the city and the developer as to what they wanted. And it helped, quite frankly, it was one of the major reasons why my former community got developed as fast as it did, and it was, it allowed for a lot of things that, quite frankly, wouldn't have happened. And one of the other, one of the other things, one of the other nice things is, what people don't understand is, with a planned unit development, you, the governing body, the Planning Commission, you have quite a bit of control as to what can and can't happen. And a perfect example, we had a, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, when the economy went south, we had a project that, in the downtown district, they wanted to put a right aid in. And it was in our main, it was in our main four corner of downtown event. And they would have got a million dollars, they'd have been able to sell the property for a million dollars to the person who, to the person... Probably would have been able to have sold for a million dollars. City actually owns some of the property, we've got quite a bit of money on it. But because of planned unit development, the way it was set up, it wouldn't have... They wanted to put the right aid, like your traditional, like your traditional right aid is how they've set up now. And because of the planned unit development, we were able to say no. And that development didn't happen, and we were able to develop a multimillion-dollar development on that property a couple of years later. But it gives you a lot of flexibility, a lot of control. I would strongly suggest you consider this.
Well, and I couldn't agree more, but my point is, is that throughout the document here, we've been talking about adding in commercial buildings and things like that. And B here, we're talking strictly residential. And I'm just questioning whether or not we shouldn't also have something in there for commercial and buildings and things of that nature. I don't know what that outcome would be. But to be consistent with the rest of the project is what I'm thinking.
You could overlay, I mean, you could, I guess you could overlay, I mean, you could overlay it to a different zoning.
Yeah.
We did that.
I'm comfortable with that, and Andy, you know, come up with something.
Yeah.
I'm very comfortable with that.
Okay.
I'm just pointing that out as well.
Item C is unchanged, it talks about, you know, when we talk about density, how you do the math, so take the net developed local area, and then subtract out, basically, using some things like that, too. Too comfortable with that number. Item D, I felt like was too restrictive, and it kind of defeated the purpose when it says that the minimum setbacks and yard requirements for any lot designated for residential use shall comply with the most restrictive zone district. I didn't see a lot of good in that, as it's written presently for current conditions, because again, the point of this is flexibility, so I don't want to fall back and rely on the most restrictive standard we can find when it comes to any of these things. Items E and F are unchanged. Notice under item E, it says the city may allow for a PUD to modify bulk area, setback, density, and other dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance. And then item F, again, is unchanged, land not proposed for development, but used for the collection of overall density as what we consider open space. So if they could build on it, but they're opting not to, that's how we determine what is open space. And then for non-residential uses under item G, I'm proposing that we delete all of that, mostly because, again, it's fairly restrictive, and the approval process that you'll have for a PUD moving forward, you'll be able to talk about these things. If you're concerned about something materially altering the residential character of a neighborhood, that's obviously part of your review process of making that determination, so we don't have to repeat that standard here. Fifteen point oh four specifically talks about non-residential and mixed-use PUDs. So item A just says that all uses shall be integrated into the design of the project with similar architectural and site development elements, such as signs, landscaping, et cetera. B, such uses shall be permitted only if they do not materially alter the residential character they are putting in our PUD, so that's taken out from the one above it. Couple other ones we moved down here, merchandise sales, item C. Item D, "Building design for non-residential uses shall be constructed according to the following requirements." We kept a couple of Bs, and that's because it says if it contains fewer than twenty units, seventy-five percent of those dwellings must be constructed prior to the construction of any non-residential use. And if there's more than twenty dwellings, then it's fifty percent. And we do that because a lot of times, they'll say, oh yeah, we'll build this residential thing, when they really just want to build a commercial thing. So we'll get approval for it, and then just build the thing they want, and then just forget the rest. So this requires, you know, both of those items to get constructed. Item fifteen point oh five, designing standards. So this, again, under item A, this talks about the actual physical design of a PUD. So item A talks about, "The city may permit deviations from lot area and width, buffers, open space areas, building setbacks, height limitations, and other requirements of this ordinance, provided that they are consistent with all other requirements of the chapter and, you know, the policy standards." First S is, "The applicant must identify what all the deviations are. Those must, may be approved by the council after the Planning Commission's recommendation, and may be permitted if they result in a higher-quality development or better integration of the proposed use with disrecurring uses." And then we have some criteria under number two about, so, you know, this wants... When we talk about deviations from the underlying zoning, we're encouraging that, but encouraging that as long as it serves some sort of purpose. So A, B, C, D, "Shall preserve the best natural features on the site, shall create, maintain, or improve wildlife habitat, shall create or maintain or improve open space for residents, shall enhance views into the site," we have a couple more on the next page. "Shall constitute an adapter, reuse, or redevelopment of buildings and or property, and shall be necessary for the development or redevelopment of property that would not be feasible otherwise." You know, so again, if someone's asking to change or deviate from what would ordinarily be permitted, we'll say, great, we want you to do that, but tell us why, tell us, you know, how this is going to... You know, how is this going to benefit the city? Because part of this is that this is for, it's not just for the applicant's benefit, for the city's benefit, too. Item B, one and two, underground telephone and transmission wires and all that. That's going to happen anyways, everyone does that now. It almost doesn't need to be in here. Then number two is signage, which is just, must comply with the underlying district in which the PUD is proposed. Item C, conditions, this is unchanged, it just says that in approving a PUD, the City Council may propose conditions at approval, which is very common. You guys put conditions on virtually everything you approve. And so that is not a change. Fifteen point oh five, that's, we've, you know, as you can kind of see, a lot of this stuff has already, we've been through it, it's just been moved down and reshuffled, it hasn't actually been completely deleted. Fifteen point oh six, open space, this is largely unchanged, so we didn't mess with the open space standards very much. On page eight, in fifteen point oh seven, what we did change significantly, we shouldn't say changed, we just specified, because it wasn't really talked about much in the first, in the ordinance now, is the actual application process. So, starting on fifteen point oh seven on page eight, "Application for PUDs shall be submitted and acted upon as a rezoning." So when someone comes in for a PUD, you're actually rezoning a property to a PUD zoning district. Which is similar to rezoning to anything else, except for that when you approve the PUD, you all, when you approve the rezoning, you also lock in the building design, the layout, the land uses that are in it, all of that. So it's a rezoning, but it's almost like a conditional, rezoning in that respect. Like, yes, we're zoning your PUD, but you're also memorializing by ordinance the layout, the design, and the specifics of that particular application and site plan. Item B is just a kind of a Cliff Notes version of the approval process. So there's an optional preliminary Planning Commission review. Then there's a Planning Commission review of the PUD concept plan and PUD rezoning, which are, which will run in tandem. Planning Commission holds a hearing and makes a recommendation to City Council. City Council also holds a hearing, and then makes the final decision. Then following that concept plan review is the PUD final site plan review. And so we do this in these two steps with the concept plan and the final site plan, because the concept plan doesn't have to have a level of... plan, because the concept plan doesn't have to have the level of detail that the site plan does necessarily. So the applicant gets a little bit of surety in the process, and they'll know that if their final site plan, under step three here, is the same as their, as their concept plan, once they do, you know, the stormwater and all of that stuff and spend all that money, you know, the planning commission will be bound to approve it as long as it's the same as the concept plan. Now, if they change everything, that's of course different. But, but the PUD final site plan review is all those final details, you know, construction plan type of detail that he wouldn't have in the concept. Item C talks about a statement in regard to compliance with the criteria for approval. So we have approval standards, it will get to in a minute, we ask the applicant to address those standards in their application that is unchanged from the existing ordinance. Items D and E, so this says, upon the approval or approval with conditions, the applicant may apply for preliminary plat approval, condo approval, private road, et cetera. So a PUD does not substitute all of that stuff. So if someone still needs to get a permit for a private road, or if they need approval for a condominium or for a subdivision, so a plat is, they still have to go, go through that process too, it doesn't excuse any of that. But again, it, once the PUD is in place, it allows surety for the developer to know that it, it's, it's already approved, it's just a matter of following the process that I want elsewhere. And with a lot of these things, they could all, if they wanted to, do it all in tandem. They could do it all at the same time if they wanted to, we can have like three concurrent applications that all depend on one another, and we'll get to that in a minute in a little more detail. And item E, and this is kind of stated elsewhere too, it talks about how it's a rezoning, but it says approval of the PUD shall constitute an amendment to the city's zoning map. So that property or property is, that's subject to the application, would be rezoned to PUD, just like the purple area on, on the map over here, that is a PUD, it's zoned PUD.
And that would be a new, a new zone, different than, say, the purple one?
Yeah, well, it would, it would be PUD, I mean, it would show up as, as that same color, but it would have its own set of conditions to go with it. So we would put all the conditions down there, obviously, because there might be fifteen pages worth, but.
Right.
So when, if, if, if the city needed to look up, you know, those conditions, they could find that, like, oh, zoned PUD, when file, find what your approved conditions are, and then all that stuff would be specified. So fifteen point oh eight, this specifies the preliminary planning commission review items, so it looks like my auto numbering, my auto number here, so it should be A, not F. So what this does is, is it allows an applicant, at their option, to come into a planning commission meeting and have a kind of pre-application conversation with the planning commission, so they can show you the plan, say, this is what I'm thinking about, what do you think? And then you can give them feedback before, you know, they, they pull the trigger with the application and start that process. There's two public hearings involved, which we'll get to in a minute. And so it's, it's a substantial investment in time and resources to get a PUD through the process, and so this allows for them to get some feedback from the planning commission on whether or not you think they would be acceptable. Note, under item I, which should be item D, on the very bottom of section fifteen oh eight here, says formal actions shall not be taken at a preliminary review, and statements made shall not be considered binding commitments or in approval. So you can say, yeah, that looks pretty good, but that doesn't mean you can't change your mind, you know, if you make a site visit after the fact, or if something happens, or you just change your mind, this still entails you to do that. Fifteen point oh nine, so this is procedures for the PUD concept plan and PUD rezoning. So item A just lists out all the stuff that they would need to submit, so this is similar, this is starting on page nine, towards the bottom, spelling nine to page ten, and eleven. So all of that stuff that someone would need to turn in with, with an application and site plan, and everything on there is laid out on pages ten and eleven. On page eleven, item B, planning commission review and public hearing. So this.
Andy, just, just briefly here, the ones on, under fifteen oh nine, those are all pretty standard, are they not?
Yes.
I mean, there's probably differences between your and Raptor's.
Correct. A couple of things that I would call out, which we'll talk about in a minute, is under, on page ten towards the bottom, number seven, phasing plan. So a lot of PUDs are multi-phase PUDs, we're, we're in really phase one, then phase two, then phase three. So that's something that they would need to sort of tell us, how many phases are they going to be, if there's maybe more than one. A lot of them are, will, will just be one phase. Could approve, they'll build the whole thing, and then they'll look out. But yeah, otherwise, this stuff is all pretty standard, it's just information.
Right.
Under item B, planning commission review and, and public hearing, so this is, you know, of course, with something like this, we would propose, you know, we would give you a report that walked through all of the standards and, and reviewed the, the proposed PUD. There, there would be a, a public hearing. This is actually not a required public hearing, not the act anyways, I'm suggesting to put it in here, because I think it's important for you guys to hear from the public and to have that notification, but it is not required. And so, on item two, which just says that following the hearing, the planning commission will make a recommendation, and that recommendation shall be documented with findings to justify its recommendation, so you're gonna write it all down, which will help you with the course. And then item three is, the planning commission must find that the standards of fifteen point ten are satisfied, and we'll get to those in a minute. So those are the review standards. Then after planning commission, then you guys, like with any other rezoning, you make the recommendation to city council. One of the changes between this and irregular rezoning is that the city council is required to hold a public hearing for a PUD rezoning. So they will also hold a hearing, which means there's also a fifteen day notice. Everyone that got a notice for the planning commission public hearing will get another notice that says, hey, the city council is holding a hearing, and I'm saying application. That's whether it's recommended for approval or not. And so then following that, public hearing, the city council will make the final decision, written out with findings and any conditions of approval. And then items on page twelve, I have three and four. Item three just allows the city council to place reasonable conditions on a PUD, including performance guarantee, and if it actually guaranteed it is. Then, and now number four, approval of PUD concept plan rezoning shall be incorporated into a rezoning amendment. And so again, with any zoning amendment, whether it's a rezoning on the map, or a PUD, or a tax amendment like we've been working on once, it's approved by the city council, the city must send out a notice of adoption paper and have it published, that same process has to happen with a PUD. So fifteen point ten, if there are no questions on that process so far, I know there's a lot of information here, so bear with me. When planning commissions and city council is reviewing a PUD concept plan, we have these six standards here, and you'll have to find that they are all met. So the first item is that it proposes the intent and purpose and all qualifying conditions that we talked about earlier, in fifteen one oh one and two. Item B, uses conducted within the PUD, its impact on the community and other aspects are consistent with and further implement the policies of the adopted master plan. So that's us relying on a master plan, again, to make sure that this is something that is contemplated and, and desired by the community. Item C, the proposed PUD shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained in manner harmonies with the character of adjacent properties, surrounding uses of land, the national environment, capacity of public services and facilities. Item D shall not be hazardous to adjacent property or involve uses, activities, materials, or equipment, will be detrimental to health, safety, and welfare, due excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, or glare. The proposed PUD shall not place the land on public services and facilities in more than current or anticipated future capacity, and that shall satisfy all applicable local, state, and federal regulations. So none of this stuff was in here before, there weren't any standards when it came to approving a PUD. And so I'm not sure how it was done, because actually, in the years that I've been here so far, and we have not done a PUD yet, they don't happen a lot.
You get lucky.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, it, I, I agree, because if it were a highly contentious application, it would have been a bit more difficult to come to that decision. So this kind of guides your decision-making a little bit. They're objective standards, they're not meant to steer anyone towards anything, but, you know, when we talk about, just like with, with special lane uses, right, we walk through all of those standards, this shall be met, this shall be met, this shall be met, and standards of approval. Last, do the same thing with this, is this approved, you know, does it meet these conditions? Does it do this? And have a conversation on each one of those, that's important. Fifteen point eleven, so after, assuming it's approved, after that approval then, the applicant comes back to the planning commission only for what's essentially a site plan review. So they have their final PUD plan, they've done all the grading, all the stormwater, all the landscaping, all of that stuff, brings it all into planning commission for a final site plan review, planning commission will review it, make sure that it, that tracks and is consistent with the original concept plan, and if it is, then shall, then the planning commission shall approve it. On page thirteen now, section fifteen point twelve, concurrent review, this is about I was talking about earlier, so sometimes folks will want to sort of fast track through this process, it takes a while, or it can take a while with, with the, with the optional planning commission meeting, and a formal planning commission meeting and hearing, city council hearing, then back to the planning mission, that's four meetings, that can take three months at least. If they want to speed that up a little bit, we're going to allow that. So in this case, it says under A here, the applicant may request a final site plan be reviewed concurrently with an application for concept plan. So if they want to spend the money upfront and give you everything you need to know right up front with that concept plan application, that's fine, we're not gonna, we're not gonna force them to drag out the process longer if they want to take that risk. Now, understanding that, if it's denied, then they're out all that money, so that's up to them. If requested, the planning commission may approve or deny, or recommend approval or denial of certain permitted uses or uses requiring specific authorization, tenant plats, condo site, condos, or other forms. So, you know, there are, you know, you know, again, the planning commission, if it's, if someone wants to go through this process, the planning commission can, can approve certain parts of it, or disapprove certain parts of it, you know, this part is okay, but you have to come back and, you know, make these changes and have those built into your conditions.
And they would have to come back to the planning commission before it, it would get sent to the city council, correct?
Yes. Yes, so in this case, city council would be, would be the last step, basically, they wouldn't have to come back to that final site plan review, because it'd all be happening at the same time. So if approval is recommended, the approval shall be conditioned upon city council approval of the concept plan. So you can't approve a final site plan without the rezoning being effective, so that's, that's just something that we would build into the language of the approval. And in all cases, knowing these authorizations shall be given until all required permits and approvals are created by decision in accordance with the applicable terms. So there could be an instance, for example, where if it's a mixed-use PUD, one of the uses proposed in a mixed-use PUD might be a special use instead of a permitted use. So if they need a special use permit, we'd still look at that use individually on its own and apply those standards, for example. Or if there are private roads, there are condominiums, there are plats, those are all separate processes, so again, they have to make sure all those eyes are dotted and tase are crossed before they start. Fifteen point thirteen, approved PUDs, so once it's approved, this is just a bunch of stuff that either comes up after the fact, or pertains primarily to something that's already approved. Item A deals with phased projects, so when there's a multi-phase project, each phase shall be, or the project shall be designed so that each phase, when completed, shall be capable of standing on its own in term, in terms of services, facilities, open space, et cetera. So basically, each, each phase needs to be able to function on its own. You don't want to have a constructed thing with a street that doesn't go anywhere, or isn't finished, or something like that, you have to finish a phase, have it be able to, you know, function on its own, even if phases two, or three, or four never get done, that phase one, still have to be able to be a functional, usable, alone. Because as we all learned in two thousand and eight, that happens sometimes. Future phases might not get built for ten years. For item B, amendments to a PUD, so this is just similar language to the amendments to site plans or special lane uses that we see, when it gets approved, and then, you know, during the design phase or someplace, sometime after the fact, something will come up and will say, I, you need to move this building, you know, tend to be this way, or like that, you know, they need to change something. If it's a minor change, which I listed out in items one through nine, on pages thirteen and fourteen, there are minor amendments, those can be either staff approved or sent to the planning commission without a public hearing. So if it's really minor, we as staff can say, yeah, that's fine. If it is, you know, maybe not quite so minor, or something that we just feel like we should bounce off the planning commission to make sure that you're good with it, you can do that, but not notice a public hearing before, because bring it to you as a referral, and like a site plan matter, basically, and get your opinion on it. Or if it's a significant change, like you're moving an entire building around, or making something substantially larger, then they would have to start the process over again, basically, and kind of go walk through that. So in some of these instances, that's where that concurrent review portion is gonna make some sense, because we'd be able to do that a little bit quicker. Under item C, on page fourteen, expiration. So again, similar to site plans and special land uses, it's possible that you'll approve it, and for some reason, the whole thing will fall apart after the fact, and it'll never get built. Seen that happen a lot of times. So this gives them two years to get started. And then underneath that, it says it shall be under meaningful construction, construction of the proposed improvements within one year or shall peruse, which shall proceed diligently to completion. And then item two, if they've expired, actually, I should change, sorry, one. Under item two, if that time period collapses, and they haven't come back in or asked for an extension or anything, then their approval is, it's on sets, basically, and again, they have to start back over. Item three, the city council may approve extensions of up to two years of time, if they can, in writing, explaining why, and give the city council a good reason for that Upon expiration of a PUD, so sometimes what happens is a PUD will get through the concept plan and rezoning phase, but they don't come back to the final site plan. Or folks get through all of it, but they'll never build anything, so they have this property today, and it's still a zoned PUD, and it sits there as a PUD till forever, or, and item D, this specifies that the planning commission may basically initiate a rezoning to rezone it back to what it was before it was PUD. Item E, appeals and variances, so you can't get a variance from these standards, and you cannot appeal a decision on a PUD to the zoning board appeals, which in this case the city council, we have to appeal it to, well, actually, since it's a rezoning, there's a whole separate referendum process involved there, but basically, this is saying that if, if, if you don't like the decision, you can't go appeal it to the city council. And item F, performance guarantees, this allows the city to require performance guarantees for completion of the improvements. You see this most frequently for streets and sidewalks, so if someone says they're gonna build a street of certain, you know, size, and a sidewalk, and for some reason, the project falls apart, it's half done, the city could then drop on like a performance bond or a limited credit and finish it without having to spend its own funds.